Can't hear me. I guess they can hear me now. Welcome to the seven o'clock regular council meeting of September 11, 2007. To start our meeting, please do the roll call.
The record will show that all members are present.
Thank you. Is there a closed session report from the city attorneys?
No, there's nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll have our pledge of allegiance and an invocation given by Father Kerry Blue of Our Lady Queen of Angels Church. And why don't we have Leslie give the pledge of allegiance tonight? Flags at the back of the room tonight.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mayor Rosansky and members of the city council of our dear city of Newport Beach, I don't have to remind you that today is the sixth anniversary of the terrorist attacks of September 11, 2001. It is appropriate that we remember with prayer our many countrymen and women who lost their lives that day, and the hundreds of police and fire personnel, and others who selflessly went to their aid and were themselves killed or wounded as a result. So I invite you to pray. Gracious and loving God, receive our prayers for those who perished as a result of 9/11. Comfort their families in their loss. Help them to pick up the pieces of their lives and to go on. Guide our president and his advisors in their efforts to protect and lead our people. Guide our state and local governments in their responsibilities, especially our own mayor and city council, city government, and public service employees. Be with our armed forces in the Middle East and around the world, and help them to bring peace with justice to Iraq and Afghanistan and wherever they serve. May all of us be channels of your peace and promoters of justice, working together to transform the world, replacing conflicts with understanding, injustice with fairness, and oppression with true freedom. We ask this with grateful and sincere hearts. Amen.
Thank you Reverend. First, we have, I guess, a segue from the Reverend's prayer. Acknowledgement of the six-year anniversary of 9/11. I didn't prepare anything formal. I kind of left this as a time where I thought we would open it up to the council members who did want to say something. I'll just lead off to say, not only our prayers with the ones that died that day and their families, but also of the continuing losses that we suffer in Iraq. I mean, we've had over 4,000 soldiers die there, even more than died the day of 9/11. And, you know, as things will go, we'll probably have thousands more before all of our boys are home. So hopefully, they'll be in our prayers today. It's a day that'll be sort of like Fourth of July, only in reverse, I think. It'll be in our psyches for decades to come. And I'm sure we'll have remembrances like this for decades to come, if not as long as the United States exists. Because it was an eye-opening experience for many of us. And although it didn't happen here, it happened 3,000 miles away. I think we all felt it personally. So with that, I will leave it open to anybody else that has any comments. Okay, seeing none, move on to our cultural arts grants presentations.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of city council, executive leadership of the city. I'm Kerwin Rockefeller. I'm the chairman of the Newport Beach Arts Commission, and I'd like to recognise my fellow commissioners that are here tonight, Wendy Brooks and Carol Starsevich. We are here this evening for our annual cultural arts awards, our grants that we give out. We give out your money every single year to really wonderful nonprofit arts organizations that come into the city of Newport Beach or are based here in the city of Newport Beach and provide cultural arts programming for students of all ages, residents, and visitors alike. So what I'll do is I'll call each one of our grant recipients and ask them to come down and stand over here to my side. And, Mr. Mayor, would you come down and help me with the presentation of the checks? And as I call you, in alphabetical order, just please come down. You'll receive your check from the mayor, and then you'll stand over to the side, and I hope we'll do a photograph after that. Newport Beach Film Festival. Orange County Museum of Art. Orange County's Pacific Symphony. Philharmonic Society of Orange County. South Coast Repertory Theater. And last but not least, Stopgap. Please give a round of applause to all these wonderful companies and people that bring really rich cultural activities. They bring really rich cultural activities to our community. Now, a photo op. Scoot together.
Just get real cosy, because I'm only so wide on this. Come on in, Kerwin. Okay, I got the mayor. Okay, we've got it. All right, everybody smile. This will not flash, but we look at it. Ready? One, two, three, smile. Let me do one more. Everybody looking here. There we go. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for being here.
Thank you to all of you folks who bring culture to our community. We really appreciate it. Okay, our next presentation is going to be by the American Legion, and it's a donation to the 1-1 memorial fund. I saw a bunch of legionnaires back there. Come on up.
Mayor Rosansky, my name is Steve Spriggs. I'm the commander of the American Legion in Newport Beach. And this is John Lindgren. He is the donations chairman. Our friend here from Michigan State, Wild Bill, is going to take photos. And we would like to present this check for $5,000 to kick off the memorial, 1-1 memorial fundraising effort. Councilman Rosansky has done a terrific job in organising this and--
Curry.
Ah, boy. Faux pas. Okay. I apologise. Councilman Curry's done a terrific job of putting this all together. We've been working very hard, and as you can see, we've got a mock-up of the memorial sitting over here. And as the largest wartime veterans' organisation in the world, the American Legion is very proud to kick off the campaign to raise the funds for this memorial.
Well, we appreciate you bringing the money down, and it looks like seed money for us. We need a lot more, but it's a great first start. Why don't I have Councilman Curry come down with me, and we'll accept the check?
Thank you.
Mary Lee, why don't you have him get where you can see the monuments, the model in the background?
Sure. Why aren't we getting artists out here? We're going to be a little early on. Artists are a good cause.
Too heavy to hold? Probably not. It's like a clay. It might be--
Breaks it, it's just problem.
There you go. Break by six lines.
We need to work right there.
Sure.
One more.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dylan.
You have to have a new view of the flag today.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, the presentation from the American Legion marks the beginning of the fundraising efforts for this great memorial. It'll take about $100,000, but the enthusiasm that we've seen in the community so far is very, very strong, and I'm confident that we're going to make that. For those of you who would like to contribute, the contributions are tax-deductible. They should be made out to the City of Newport Beach 1-1 Memorial Fund, sent to care of the city manager's office. That's 3300 Newport Boulevard, Newport Beach, 92658. And so, please join in this great effort to honour our Marines. We'll hear from the artist in a few moments, and we'll talk a little bit about the symbolism of the monument and move forward with it. But it's a great day to honour heroes here in Newport Beach.
Thank you, Councilman Curry. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has the discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cellphones and pagers off or set them in the silent mode. This is a time for city council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on the future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Okay, we'll start with Councilwoman Gardner.
We haven't met for a month, so I have several things. Last week, four of us went up to Eureka to appear before the Coastal Commission on the Balboa Theatre. And I'm very pleased to report that due to the very good negotiating skills of Carol McDermott, who has contributed her time to the theatre, and our assistant city manager, Sharon Wood, we were able to resolve the concerns the commission had about parking for the theatre. So we are now approved, and we'll be moving forward on that end, fortunately, after all this time. Very happy about that. We've had several meetings on the Cron Del Mar Branch Library. There was a suggestion that we might want to move it to the Oasis, and after a series of meetings, we feel there's enough community support, and they want to keep it at its site, and we'll be working to make that happen for them also. This Saturday and Sunday, we will be celebrating the opening of the Newport Coast Community Centre. Saturday is the more formal day, the ribbon-cutting, when people like me stand up for a moment and point out the obvious. If you don't get enough of us tonight, you can come on Saturday. But Sunday will be the fun day. It's the family day, so that's the day I would encourage most of you to come and enjoy. It's a beautiful facility. You'll be very impressed with what the city has to offer there. I want to congratulate the Cron Del Mar Chamber of Commerce on a wonderful car show. If you haven't been to it, be sure and mark it on your calendar for next year. Gorgeous cars. I decided I was born to drive a 1938 Packard. And if anybody wants to give me one, at least a ride in one, I would love that. And last but not least, I want to thank staff, because we are having construction on Pacific Coast Highway in Cron Del Mar. And you all know, it doesn't take very much to delay traffic. And they are working every day with schedules and everything they can do to minimise the impact. So I want to thank them for that extra effort.
Councilwoman Daigle?
Yes, on behalf of the city, I attended the League of California Cities Conference in Sacramento, and I wanted to first thank our city clerk who got me there and registered and got me home. So appreciate it. There's 478 cities in attendance, and the league is an advocate for cities, and they put themselves on the political map initially with revenue protection, specifically the passage of Prop 1A, which helps the local government from heading off these raids of the state government into our local coffers. The league considered four resolutions, and one of which was a 300-foot distancing requirement on the group homes. And we believe it is a start. I spoke on the issue. There's over 1,000 people in attendance, and I really appreciate Councilwoman Hen, who is our expert in residence, to really brief me on all of the issues and the nuances of the issue. And our approach was to try and capture the attention of other cities, and that all California cities ought to be concerned about this. And certainly, there are a number of reasons for that. The homes are profitable. The businesses are making money from this. Secondly, the state is releasing people from jail that are more likely to be headed to more affordable inland and rural communities. Some of these homes are being subsidised by state tax dollars. And then certainly in Newport Beach, where we have over 100 of these homes on a narrow swath of land, we are going way beyond the definition of local need. And so, one by one, local communities came and spoke. There was Walnut Creek, who talked about the concentrations of group homes, and they said, "The whole idea is to assimilate these people into neighbourhoods." There is no neighbourhood. It's become an institution. There was Pomona, who is trying to cope with over 300 registered sex offenders living in apartments and local motels. And there's the City of Los Angeles, who authored the resolution and is looking at legislation. So the resolution passed, and where we go from here is, if I may make a couple of suggestions. I think the parallel to the airport issue is in that our community is having to absorb a greater part of impacts of regional demand than what is really our fair share. And so, with that issue, we really need to strengthen our ties with other communities, because we do have to change the state law on some of this. So I'd really encourage some of our local citizens to reach out to those other communities, and there are advocates such as yourself in these communities. And I provided Councilwoman Hen with some of the business cards of these communities. And secondly, in terms of our local control, I very much support the approach of Councilwoman Hen, which is to say, we need to be very creative within the bounds of what is legally tenable. And instead of taking the approach of saying, "Well, let's wait for 100 cities to make an ordinance, and then we'll roam the internet and figure out what to do," we have to be very creative on this issue. And I believe that we have to be on the bleeding edge, because we are on the bleeding edge, unfortunately. So those were some of the main points of that aspect of the conference. And then what I also wanted to let you know is that I did visit with many of our local legislative offices. Our community were very active in applying for Prop 84 funds, which are for our water quality and some of our infrastructure projects. So it was a very good visit, and I appreciate everyone sending me as their voting delegate. Thank you.
Thank you for attending, Leslie. Councilman Webb?
Last Thursday, I took the opportunity to attend the International Literacy Day that was over at the Central Library. The city recognised 82 learners and 74 tutors. And thanks to Carolyn Shear, who heads up the program, and the library board chairman, Teresa Chase, and Lynda Kay, our librarian, we had a very nice program that gave you an opportunity to meet some of the learners in the literacy program. Our city's literacy day strives to reach some of the 7,300 residents of Newport Beach with literacy problems. Now, it's a number that I didn't realise was out there, but apparently, there's more that needs to be done. The program strives to open doors and unlock opportunities. Our volunteers have logged in over 7,100 hours since 1986. And particularly, Donnie Madril was recognised as the receiver of the Hoffman Award, which recognised his outstanding learning in the program. And I'd like to thank Cheryl Weiss, I guess it is, our literary services coordinator, for her efforts in bringing all this together. And some of the things that they talk about is helping our learners get the confidence to go out into the community as an equal and unlock the potential. So it was a very good program, and I really enjoyed the opportunity to meet with some of these people.
Thank you, Councilman Webb. Councilman Hen?
I too have a few announcements. But first, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Gardner for taking such a leadership position on behalf of the Balboa Theatre. It's a terrific project, and she's really been greatly helpful in moving it along. Thanks to Councilwoman Daigle for her role in the League of Cities, especially on behalf of the issues dealing with group homes, which are of such importance to our community. On a happy note, we have also finally cleared away the last legal barrier to move ahead with Marina Park on the peninsula. Having signed the settlement agreements that were necessary, we are now in a position to really go to work on the good part, which is planning and building the park and moving ahead with it. That land, we hope, will be cleared by September of 2009 or sometime shortly thereafter, and that we'll get a really terrific facility on the peninsula, one that was voted in resoundingly by the residents of Newport Beach a few years ago. With regard to another memorial that we're working on and have been for a while, the memorial, the McFadden Square Memorial for the Centennial of Newport Beach, there is a fundraiser dinner that is planned for September the 28th. You'll be seeing information in the newspaper about that soon. And for the pittance of $275 per couple, you'll be able to go to dinner at the Harborside Restaurant at the Balboa Pavilion and enjoy good food and dancing, and also get your name engraved for the millennium on the McFadden Square Memorial. If you've already given money to the memorial, you should still go to the dance, because you get a free upgrade on the memorial that you have purchased in the past. A couple of nice things about the Nautical Museum, which is another outstanding cornerstone for the refurbishment, revitalisation of the Balboa Village. Roy Disney, I understand, has agreed to donate for, in perpetuity, as of the display location, the trophy for the elapsed time winner for the Transpac race. It's a 52-inch trophy. I'm sure it'll be quite impressive and will be housed permanently at the Nautical Museum. It'll be a wonderful addition to that facility, which if you have not visited, you most certainly should. It's a great addition to the peninsula and of great interest. In addition to that, for the Nautical Museum, this Friday, there will be another nice event, the Southern California Plain Air Artists Association. SO Calpapa is the acronym, which is actually a very active group of very excellent artists will be gathering. They have, there are over 100 of them that have completed now paintings of the nautical views and scenes on the peninsula. And so, there will be a dinner there, or a celebration at the Nautical Museum this Friday evening, followed on Saturday and Sunday by the ability for anyone that wants to to go down there and buy some of those wonderful paintings. So I encourage you to do that. Thirty percent of the proceeds will go to the Nautical Museum, so it's a great cause. And that would be it.
Thank you. Councilman Curry?
Well, we're certainly demonstrating that Newport Beach is the city of the arts tonight, and I would just point out, our arts commissioners were here earlier, that we completed another great season of theatre in the park and of Shakespeare in the park, our concerts in the park throughout the city that were widely attended. They were fantastic concerts, and the commission and staff deserve a tremendous amount of credit for putting them on, along with the two Shakespeare in the Park productions that were just fantastic. And once again, that along with all of our public art and all of the concerts and all of the art shows and film festival really demonstrate how Newport Beach is an arts destination. And of course, coming up, we have Taste of Newport, so it'll also be a food destination this upcoming weekend. I would also join Councilwoman Gardner in inviting you to the Newport Coast Community Centre for the grand opening Saturday and for a fun day on Sunday, with more than 100 class offerings for the community, an indoor basketball arena, an indoor/outdoor theatre, and more importantly, meeting rooms for the community, so it will truly become a focal point for Newport Coast. People will get out from behind the gates and have the opportunity to have a meeting place together in the community for the first time. It's going to be a tremendous community asset, and one that the entire city can and will be very proud of. Thank you.
Mayor Lieutenant Sowage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two announcements. First of all, a flyer has been distributed to the residents of Bay Adair and Dolphin Terrace, the front row lots in Irvine Terrace, informing them that there's a meeting tomorrow afternoon in the council chambers of the General Plan Implementation Committee to discuss a change in the policies for regulating the development of their lots. And for anyone from Irvine Terrace that's watching this, I want you to know that that is not the case. That is not on the agenda. So maybe this will save you a trip on coming down to a meeting where it's not going to be discussed. And furthermore, you should know that the categorical exemption for those lots has not changed. The policies that have been in effect for the last 25 years or so are in effect, and those lots are categorically exempt from a coastal development permit. Second thing I'd like to announce is that tomorrow evening, starting at 5:00 with a social hour and a presentation at 6:00, the Speak Up Newport is going to have a presentation by Assistant City Manager Dave Kiff on-- by Assistant City Manager Dave Kiff on the mooring situation in Newport Harbor. It's at the Newport Beach Yacht Club at the corner of Marine Avenue and Bayside Drive, and everyone is welcome to attend if you want to learn more about the mooring situation in our harbor. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just have a couple of quick things. Number one, I believe that the Police Department is still looking for residents who want to join them for the Citizens Police Academy. That'll be starting towards the end of the month. I don't know the exact date, but it's a great program. I participated in it myself, actually, and you really, you get to learn all the inner workings of the Police Department, get to go down to the jail, you get to fire automatic weapons, see the helicopter, the K-9 unit, the SWAT team, the CSI that lets you do fingerprints and things like that. So it's a nice way to spend an evening. I think it's about eight weeks in a row, and you learn a lot about what goes on in town here as far as police work goes. Last thing is, we talked about it during our study session earlier, we had the Fire Chief here, but yesterday, we officially inaugurated the new fire station built up in, well, I guess it's East Santa Ana Heights, but Santa Ana Heights area. It replaces a fire station that we lost a number of years back, and they've basically been working out of temporary quarters up there, but we have a new permanent facility. There's a training tower that's also being constructed that'll be finished soon. And in addition, there's community rooms that have been built as part of the fire station to allow for community meetings and things like that. It's a beautiful facility, it's a credit to our community. Most of the money, or vast majority of the money, came from redevelopment agency dollars. And I would like to thank, once again, well, Former Supervisor Silva, who started the kickoff with $4 million, and then Supervisor Morlock, who at the last minute came up with a check for $5.5 million. So it was $9.5 million redevelopment agency on an $11.5 million project, and I'm sure it'll be well-used. Okay, with that, I'll turn it over to the City Clerk.
Consent Calendar. All matters listed under Consent Calendar, items 1 through 17, are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor, state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Okay, Councilman Hen, any items to pull?
None.
Councilman Curry?
Item 15.
Okay. Councilwoman Gardner? Councilwoman Daigle?
I discussed with the city attorney, I'll be abstaining from 3 and 4, and then I wanted to make a comment on number 16, which is our Big Canyon Restoration Project. We're moving another step forward to restore 55 acres in the Upper Newport Bay. Thank you.
Councilman Webb?
I need to abstain from item number 10, which is Mariners Park Award, because I live within 500 feet of it.
Okay. And I have two items to pull, items number 3 and 4. And also, not an item to pull, I just want to recognize that we are receiving a $30,000 donation from the Martha J. Fleener Trust, which will be used towards maintenance and operations budget for the library, I believe. So again, thank you to the trust and the trustees who provided those funds. Okay, does staff have any items to pull?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Any member of the public have an item that they want pulled? Okay, singing none? Bring it back to councilmen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move approval of the consent calendar with the exceptions of items 3, 4, 15, and Councilmember Webb abstaining on item 10.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Motion carries.
Okay. Items 3 and 4 were pulled by me. They both deal basically with the same issue, so I'll ask your indulgence, and we'll basically just discuss them both at the same time. Item number 3 deals with a contract to be entered into with the California Public Employees' Retirement System. It's kind of a contract that we need to enter into with regard to certain enhancements to our pensions for both our firefighters and our other employees that we're going to be discussing with regard to item number 4, where we've entered into or negotiated memorandums of understanding with different employee unions. And so if, see Dave Kiff here, he's our chief negotiator now, if you give us a quick report on some of the changes in item number 4.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Item 4 is a proposed new memorandum of understanding. It's actually several memorandum, memorandum of understanding relating to what's known as the miscellaneous group of employees. Those include almost everybody who's non-safety, so folks who don't carry a badge generally.
Approximately how many employees?
Yeah, question I didn't anticipate. 600, and thank you to Gwen Buffard in the audience, about 640 employees. This would not include our part-time employees. They're full-time employees who are non-safety. Those series of MOUs do a couple of things. One, the term basically is for three years, starting retroactive to July 1st. There are salary increases in there, which are roughly 11% over those three years, so 11% total. The most significant change to many in there is an employee paid 2% at 55% per system. And for the benefit of folks at home, this is a, we toss around those terms fairly freely. This means that if you retired at age 55, you would get 2.5% of your salary, your last year's salary, times the amount of years you were in the per system. We gave an example of a police dispatcher who was making $80,000 a year, who worked for the system for 30 years. He or she would receive about $60,000 in retirement benefit. This is a defined benefit plan rather than defined contribution plan. The city would be moving for its miscellaneous employees from a 2% at 55 to this 2.5% at 55. There also is a supplemental MOU that five different bargaining groups would have to execute, and this would, this is at Councilmember Curry's request, and it would say that this nature, the employee-paid nature of this plan, I didn't discuss that, but could if you had questions. The employees are actually deducting salary to fund this, the increased cost of the plan. But the employee-paid nature of the plan couldn't change for 10 years, it couldn't be renegotiated for 10 years, nor could the plan itself be changed to any greater plan. So we would, the employees would be locked into a 2.5 at 55% plan until 2017. There are also some health benefit increases involving the payment that the city makes to cover healthcare costs, holiday reference, and potentially certification pay to reward those employees that have gone above and beyond in getting a certificate that's beneficial to their work.
Thank you, Dave. The reason I called it up was particularly focused on the pension enhancement. As Dave has pointed out, the employees currently get 2% at 55, and they'll be moving to a 2.5% at 55, which is basically a 25% increase in their pension benefit. As it is negotiated, it is self-funded by the employee, and technically, we are entering into a side agreement or a separate memorandum of understanding that says that employees will pay it for the next 10 years. But just like any other contract, that can be modified, I believe. Is that accurate, city attorney?
An MOU could be modified by an agreement of both parties.
Yeah. So it's not, there's nothing to say that it can't be changed, it's just the terms that they've basically agreed to today.
That's true, except for by agreeing under an MOU, it means that the associations cannot bring that up as a bargaining issue for 10 years.
Okay. I know a development agreement that says that we won't change it either, and we're probably be changing it, so.
Well, sorry, Mr. Mayor. In addition to the MOU, you have the Myers-Millias-Brown Act, which says we're both negotiating in good faith, and it would be bad faith on the employees' part to reopen this for no particular cause.
Okay. I guess, well, the point I'm leading to and where I stand on this is, I think that there's been a trend over the last decade or so for enhanced employee pensions. I think the tide is turning in the state. We're starting to see initiatives at the state level. I think we had one proposed by our own Councilmember Curry that we'll probably be talking about at our next meeting, initiative dealing with pensions and increases in pension benefits. And I just don't think that that's the direction that the city should be going when it seems like the current is starting to swim the other way or flow the other way, and so that we're kind of going upstream when the current is going downstream. So, you know, I don't want to drag it out any longer, I think I know how this is going to go anyway, but I just want to go on record as stating my objection to any further pension enhancements. I understand that the employees are paying for it out of their own pocket today. That doesn't mean that when we come back for negotiations later, that they're going to say, well, you know, we have a big deduction for pensions, so we're really not pay parity with other cities. There'll be pressure on other councils, maybe not when I'm on the council, but councils down the road, to increase, you know, net pay to parity level with other cities. And I just don't think that's the direction that we should be taking at this point in time. So with that, I'll open it up for comment by any other councilmembers.
Mr. Mayor?
Well, Curry lit his light first, I'll let him go.
Again, just to be clear, David, the way that this is drafted, it's for 10 years that the employees will pay the full cost of this increase.
That's correct, Mr. Curry.
And can you tell me where this would put our employees relative to other cities in Orange County? Because I understand that currently, at the 2 at 55 formula, we're in the bottom third of cities. Is that correct?
That's correct. And in addition to the Orange County cities, we try and recruit from LA and San Diego, and that still places us in the bottom third. Bringing to 2.5 at 55 puts us squarely in the middle third, certainly not in the top third.
And let me ask the city manager, Homer, do you believe this is an important change in order to recruit and maintain the workforce of the city?
I certainly do.
Okay. I will support this, and as you know, I have proposed a charter amendment, and I did it in anticipation of this item coming forward, because I do believe we need to make this adjustment in order to provide for the ability to recruit and retain employees going forward. Once this adjustment is made, it's my belief that we will have reached parity across the board on all of our pension benefits, and it's appropriate at that time to put into place the same kind of protections they have in San Francisco and San Diego that would require voter approval for any subsequent increases, which would address the mayor's concern about this contract ultimately being undone in the future. It cannot do so without voter approval under that charter amendment, and of course, we'll be discussing that at our next meeting. So I will be supporting the staff recommendation.
Councilman Webb?
Dave, you mentioned it's 2.5 at 55. What is it at, what does it top out at, at say 62 or 63?
The line itself is flat, so there...
So it's 2.5 straight across the board?
That's correct. A person would have a benefit, a greater benefit by staying, just because he or she increases the amount of years that that 2.5% is applied to.
Okay, at 2% at 50, where does it top out?
I believe that one was someone else's.
At 63? At 63, at what percentage?
2.41, I think.
So in other words, we really aren't getting a full 25% increase all the way across the board, because the other program, as you, in your later years, gets closer to the 2.4.
Anyone else? All right, I'll open up for public comment.
Yeah, we'll take comments on both items at the same time, items 3 and 4. They're related. I only brought up item 3 because it was kind of putting the cart before the horse. We're going to negotiate a contract before we agree to enter into the contract to change the pension benefits, so.
I'd like to read a letter, I think, and make a comment or so, maybe after that. Retirement benefits. Most retirement benefits have been defined benefit. A defined benefit is a contractual commitment to pay a certain amount each year, and that's by the employee.
Just a quick point, you got to tell people who you are, even though we know who you are.
I'll sign one, too. Dick Nichols from Corona del Mar.
Thank you. You could start his time over again.
Thank you. There are two types of benefits, a defined benefit and a defined contribution. A defined contribution is like each of us have when we put something in a keel. A defined benefit is a guarantee that you will receive so much money each year from the person that you're doing this with. Now, that will be paid, and is defendable in court, so if everything falls apart, that person still gets that, and that's quite a bit. Many of our large corporations and private businesses have gone bankrupt or have reorganized in order to lose this defined benefit retirement and/or healthcare commitment. 90% of the nation's 16 million public service workers have a binding commitment to receive defined benefit contributions. 65% are slated to receive continued health benefits. Retirement healthcare benefits are estimated as high as $100,000 per worker covered. This was done by Cato. The Government Accounting Standards Board, GASB, now requires larger state and local plans to estimate unfunded liability. The problem is that GASB cannot force state and local plans to do so. Cato Institute estimated in a survey, 16 state and 11 government, local governments that average accrued liability of $135,000 for each covered worker, and this is in healthcare. The debt was about three times conventional debt of these cities. So the conventional debt of the city is when they put a bond issue out, like the school board to buy schools. We would like to see a financial report, as called out by GASB, for our retirement and health plans, and particularly, we would like to see discussed the handling of retroactive liability and how these provisions are applied to retirees. What I'm speaking about is a person that's been here 15 years or 16 years and buys into a 2.5% plan or a 3% plan from a 2% plan, more than doubles what he gets out of it, but he only puts in 10 years instead of 25. Supervisor Morlock also asked a good question. Can the council commit the electorate to a new tax without a vote of the people? And what was pointed out in this is, is this is supposedly the way the state of California is negotiating, and we're doing the same thing. They contradict one another. Finally, there is no discussion of healthcare costs or how we are handling them, and I have to apologize, there is a discussion, and I have to say that we do have some limits on healthcare costs, and at least that's in good stead. But basically, all our major corporations have had to go the opposite way. There is, private business cannot handle 3% at 50. 2.5% at 55, I think that's still well above them. The statement was made that we, that the city employees don't belong to Social Security. Why should they? I mean, they would have no call on any property. If Social Security goes bad, it just goes bad, they can't pay. But when this goes bad, they have a call on your property. I think this is something that we have to become more competitive with the real world. Otherwise, as citizens, we could end up picking a very high liability. Thank you.
Thank you, Dick. Anyone else? Doris?
Hi, my name is Dolores Otting. I live in Newport Beach. Maybe this is none of my business, but Councilmember Daigle had to recuse herself. Is it because she has, I mean, like, she used to work, used to work for the city, and also, I thought it was policy, and this is not meant to be derogatory in any... also, I thought it was policy, and this is not meant to be derogatory in any way, but when a council member does, I mean, like, recuse themselves, we have a council policy that says that they're supposed to leave the dais. That's the whole idea, is that they're not supposed to be part or influenced in any way. Has that changed, Robin?
I advised in talking with council member Daigle, she chose, has chosen to abstain for her own personal reasons. She doesn't have a financial conflict.
Okay.
So she doesn't need to...
Leave the dais.
Leave the dais.
Okay, all right. Okay, because I'm under the impression that there are other council members up there that are part, that have a PERS plan also.
Yes, it was my, it's my estimation that the provisions of state law allow for council members necessarily to vote on some benefits that they receive, like health and insurance and retirement benefits that they might receive, even if though, as long as they are not in addition to or over and above the benefits that are received by all the rest of the council members.
By the rest of, okay.
I mean, all the rest of the employees.
Okay, I understand that. That makes sense to me. So basically, we only have three people up there that don't have some type of an interest in this, but that's okay. I, four, three or four?
I believe there's four council members that do not have prior PERS membership.
Okay.
And I'm under the PERS program, under retirement, but the problem is...
Correct.
No matter what we do, I can't get any increases. I'm fixed.
Yeah, I mean, what we're, what we're talking about now, okay, thank you. That was just some housekeeping that I just wanted to, you know, because, yeah, well, I'm sure everyone on, I'm sure a lot of people out there that are on Social Security would also like to increase their retirement, and unfortunately, as Dick said, they are, I mean, they say that it's going to go broke by 2017, so, you know, this is going to be a big nightmare one day. The term of the safety employees, do they have also this 10-year that they can't do anything, or what's the story on their?
The answer is no.
So when does their contracts become, you know, renewed? And I mean, I, you know, have no problem with the police department and the fire department, and honestly, with the police department, they do put on a bulletproof vest every day for us, and I mean, that's something that a lot of people sitting in offices don't do. Not that they don't do a good job, don't get me wrong, but, I mean, there is a big distinction. So how long is their agreement for?
Is it three years, Dave?
Fire?
We're in the middle of the police contract, the fire contract ends at the end of this year.
Oh, I thought the fire just got this, too. Okay, so they do seem to come whipping around so fast. Okay, so that means that they could get 3.5% at the next time, which is...
No, because that's not an available contract with PERS.
Oh, okay, so it's only what's available with PERS. Okay, well, I guess, since we, I don't, I don't understand, I don't know, I don't, I guess I don't know why we need to do this, I mean, like, further initiative if, like, we've locked in everybody for 10 years. I guess it's for the health and safety people that we would have to be able to vote on their issues, and I understand MOUs also in years downstream, things change and people change, and so, and I know how this is going to go, too, tonight. So anyway, I just needed to ask some questions, and I appreciate everybody that works here, and I wish when I was younger I became a city employee, considering all the time that I spent at City Hall, I should have gotten a job. I would have been able to qualify for this plan by now. So, but I didn't, and I'm going to be the other type of people out there, so, thank you.
Thank you, Dolores. Anybody else that'd like to comment on this matter? Okay, seeing no one, I'll bring it back for a motion.
Move the recommended action.
Why don't we vote on both three and four at the same time here?
On both three and four?
Second.
Okay, please vote. Hit the abstain. Hit the button.
With Mayor Rosansky voting no, and council member Daigle abstaining, the motion carries.
Okay, I think the next one is item number 15. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. Today is a day to honor heroes, and as you know, the city of Newport Beach has adopted the Marines of the First Battalion, First Marines, who are, in fact, as we speak tonight, deployed in Iraq. The committee has been charged with developing a monument, a design and location for the city, and I am pleased to report to you that we have conducted an international search for an artist. We had proposals all the way from South America, and if I could invite Benjamin Victor to come forward, he is the artist who has been selected. Mr. Victor is an accomplished artist. He most recently created the sculpture. As most of you know, each state of the Union has two statues in Statuary Hall in the United States Capitol. Mr. Victor most recently did these, one of the statues for the state of Nevada, Sarah Winamaka, which was unveiled in the Capitol Rotunda. He has also done accomplished statuary throughout the country. We are now prepared, as you saw earlier, with the, with the American Legion donation to kick off the fundraising. Our goal is to have this statue in place by Memorial Day of next year. What I'd like to do is to invite Mr. Victor to introduce himself to the council and to also sort of explain, and you see over here, it's situated for the cameras now, we'll ultimately turn it so that, so that the council can see it, the monument and sort of the symbolism behind it. Benjamin?
Thank you, Councilman Curry. My name's Benjamin Victor, and I'm from Aberdeen, South Dakota, and it's my honor and pleasure to be here today, especially today, to talk about a memorial to our brave Marines that are over fighting for our freedom. You know, when they told me the council meeting was on September 11th, I just thought it was incredibly appropriate, and I'll just talk a little bit about the design here and then show you the piece and then answer any questions that you have about the proposal. And it is on kind of a tight, a little tight timeline, so I'd like to get started on the piece as soon as possible when we've discussed that with the committee. I'll read you a paragraph about the piece here, and basically, it outlines my design. My preliminary drawings and the maquette here outline a design that includes a life-size bronze sculpture of a young Marine. He is walking forward while looking back. As he walks forward, he is enveloped by a nine-foot-tall polished black granite corridor. He is literally walking into the granite corridor, which creates an interesting set of questions and leads the viewer towards introspection. Is he already away from home and in the war, looking back on the times he had at home before he went off to war? Or is he taking a final look back as he heads off to war, giving a last goodbye glance before he is deployed? Our questions are met by no less a paradigm as we walk around the piece to realize that the limbs being enveloped by the granite piece are not coming through the other side. He enters in but is not coming back out. Instead, we see the names from the First Battalion, First Marines that have served and continue to serve for our country. This will not only be a powerful visual metaphor for the Marines leaving for war, never to return, but also an artistic response to the fact that every Marine is profoundly changed by their experiences in battle. And, you know, this design didn't just come out of nowhere. I interviewed about 200 soldiers of various branches of service, many of which were Marines, from all different periods in our US history, from World War II all the way to current soldiers. I had a couple of Iraqi Freedom Soldiers that were 18 years old and came into my studio. You know, and as a young artist at 28, I'm usually younger than most of my peers and younger than a lot of the people that I meet with, and to have these guys at age 18 willing to serve and give their lives for our country was very moving to, to hear their stories and, and to see the different ways they were affected. And one in particular, that's a 26-year-old Marine that was injured in a, an accident in Iraq, came back with, you know, he lived through the accident and had the best medical care, but now he's profoundly changed and can't remember some of the things of his life before the war, still learning to, to deal with and remember his wife even. And so watching and hearing some of these stories, this idea came about and this concept, and as I did the various sketches of the design, I just really fell in love with it, and I've set aside a lot of large projects to work solely on this project because it's something that's very close to my heart and I feel like is a great and worthy artistic expression for the city of Newport.
Thank you, Benjamin. Can you move the statues with the council, can they have an opportunity to see it? And if I could just, Mr. Mayor, in closing, the process that we've gone through with the 1-1 committee has been to solicit these artistic proposals, to select the artist, to work with the Arts Commission, to get their buy-in, which they have, which they have done, to work with the Parks, Features and Recreation Commission for a location. We mailed to more than 600 residents in the Castaways area with no opposition from the mailing before the PBNR Commission most recently, and to find a site located out on the point in Castaways Park, which will be visible from the highway, although it's about 250 yards from any of the homes. And many of you have read in the paper that there is some concern by some of the neighbors, and I took it upon myself actually to call the homeowners' association, and the concern is really focused on remembrances of hats and, and cereal and other things that are left on some of the memorials that exist in the park currently. And in talking with council member Webb, he and I have gone out to the site a couple of times to look at it. You know, we think we can work with PBNR and with staff to address those, those concerns that really don't affect here. There are no significant view issues, as you can see, because the monument is so far out on the view horizon from the homes as to not impede anybody's personal view. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I would move the item on approval. This gives us the authority to put Mr. Victor under contract so we can push forward for this Memorial Day dedication. It authorizes some letterhead, which is required by policy, so we can start the fundraising effort, and it designates the site in Castaways Park for the monument, and of course, the council member Webb and I are committed to working with the residents to address any concerns that they might have as we move forward in this regard. So that's my motion.
Okay. Thank, anything else that you'd like to add, Mr. Victor?
No, if you don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Did an excellent job on the statue.
Thank you.
And the monument. I'll open up for public comment. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on this item?
Mayor?
Yes?
May I add just a piece of information that I thought was interesting in regards to the concept of not coming home, or coming home changed or being impacted by the war? Just for anybody that's interested in the audience, I, over the weekend, saw an amazing, very dramatic example of that impact in a, in a program that HBO is putting on right now called The Live Day, and it's a series of interviews with service people coming back from Iraq with the injuries. And the interesting point of this, one of the most interesting points was that there are more casualties, I mean, more injuries, people living through their injuries than there were during the Civil War, and that there's a very large number of our servicemen that are coming back with injuries due to the advanced medical care that during the Civil War probably contributed to the casualties. So I think if, if anybody's interested and has HBO, it's a really worthwhile program to watch.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second the motion.
I think Mr. Councilmember Hen beat you to that.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I have a question.
Well, he kind of did it on the slide. Okay, we have a motion, a second, please vote.
Somebody has a question.
I'm sorry? Did you have a comment?
I just had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Actually, on the stationary. Is that going to be used for fundraising?
Yes.
Okay, and is that okay to use the city seal to raise money?
I think council would have to approve that, which is requested tonight.
Okay, yes.
That's, that's the council policy. You'd have to approve it. That's why it's on the agenda.
Okay, any other comments? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. It completes our consent calendar. 16 is a big canyon, yeah. Okay, we're going to head into our public hearings right now. For those of you who are in the audience, though, they came for item number 21 tonight. It has to do with the use of funds from Lennar Homes of California in connection with the development agreement for Santa Barbara condominiums. Originally, this was, well, this agenda item was generated by council member Selich, and, you know, earlier this evening, he informed me that he's going to request that this item be taken off calendar. So it's later in the meeting, probably I can get to it for at least an hour or two. If there's anybody here that did come specifically for that, we're probably not going to do anything other than take it off calendar, so I'll save you some time. If you like, you're more than welcome to stay. There will be a public comment portion of the meeting, even if we do take it off calendar. Okay, public hearings, our first is a code amendment. Madam Clerk?
Item number 18, code amendment number 2007004, screening of mechanical equipment, adding regulations requiring the screening of all exterior roof-mounted and ground-mounted mechanically, mechanical equipment on properties in all zoning districts.
Staff of the board?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I am Janet Johnson Brown, Assistant Planner. This proposed code, excuse me, this proposed code amendment, number 2007004, will revise the zoning code to include regulations requiring the screening of all rooftop and ground-mounted mechanical equipment in all zoning districts. Currently, there are no regulations requiring the screening of mechanical equipment in the base residential, commercial and industrial districts, while on the other hand, some of the specific plan districts do include regulation. The proposed new regulations will include the following provisions. All exterior roof-mounted and ground-mounted equipment shall be screened from public rights of way and/or public property. An exception to the screening of exterior roof-mounted and ground-mounted equipment has been included for situations where it can be demonstrated that the equipment cannot be seen from any public rights of way or public property. The screening of roof-mounted mechanical equipment shall be accomplished through mechanical roof wells or solid screening mounted permanently to the roof structure, and the screening materials and details are required to be compatible with the architectural style, colors and materials of the building. Screening of ground-mounted equipment shall be accomplished with fences, walls, walls or solid hedges, and with landscape adjacent to the walls to soften the impact. By amending the zoning code to include these provisions, the screening of mechanical equipment will be applied consistently to all properties in all zoning districts throughout the city. It will also be consistent with the goals and policies of the general plan to promote the high quality of architectural and site design for developments in the city. That concludes my presentation. I answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Janet. This is actually something that I've been asking for, for a year or two. Much to my dismay, I did find out that we don't have just a general regulation that prevents this, and I've seen several buildings, several commercial properties in my district in West Newport sprout with new air conditioning equipment, you know, just up on the roof. It looks ugly, and it's really, you know, that's something that should have been done away with a long time ago. So I'm glad to see that this is finally coming forward, and I will be wholeheartedly supporting it. Is there anybody else that'd like to comment on this?
I just, I noticed there was one cryptic note in the Planning Commission minutes from this, saying that it would be too difficult for residential areas. I was just going to expand on that a little bit because I would think people in residential districts would be a little bit concerned, particularly about perhaps something roof-mounted.
The example cited at the Planning Commission meeting was that if you were on a property on the second floor and looking into your neighbor's yard, and you could see the ground-mounted, like HVAC air conditioning unit, that it would be very difficult to screen from the adjacent neighboring property. So they eliminated that requirement and made the requirement to be from public rights of way, meaning the street or sidewalk or public property, like a park or something. If that makes sense.
Okay, anyone else?
Would that cover view from above, like, for instance, houses that are down below a bluff and you can see it from the street?
We included a provision in the, the regulations stating that if it was necessary, the planning director could require screening from above.
I move the recommended action, realizing we still need to have public input.
Okay, well, I was going to move it, but I'll just second it. Anyone else? Okay, please open up for public comment.
Hi, I'm Dolores Otting. What happens if they don't screen their roof? I mean, is that in here? What is the procedure if they don't screen?
Well, they're going to have to come in for a building permit to do whatever they're going to do, and as part of that permit process, they will be required to put screening.
What if it's a building that already has air conditioning on the roof and has had it on the roof for a few years and it's, and it's visible from the street? What do they do? Do, I mean, like, do they have to do it, or, or is this just for buildings from today forward?
Well, that's a good question. Janet?
What we also included in the regulation is at the time the equipment is installed, so if they're changing out equipment, the new piece would be required to be screened.
Okay.
So anyone that did this two years ago and it's an eyesore, they don't have to comply with it until they check. with it until they change their equipment?
Unfortunately. At least the way it is right now.
That's really too bad, because that's really, so, okay, so that way, anyone that comes in will get a permit, and so there is no penalty or anything, because it's all going to get done. It's really very unfortunate that we didn't take it one step further on buildings that are highly visible. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to comment on this? Seeing no one, we'll bring it back for a vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, next agenda item is item number 19.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I need to recuse myself in that I have an interment parcel in the cemetery and may be financially infloated.
Okay. Please remove yourself from the dais.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Stay in that parcel.
Okay. Do we have a staff report on this? Well, actually, can you, Madam Clerk, why don't you announce the item?
Item number 19 is the Pacific View Memorial Park Development Agreement Number 7, 3500 Pacific View Drive, to allow the construction of a six-family mausoleum and estate gardens in lieu of a 7,200 square foot community mausoleum in Building Site H of Area 8.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. The project as proposed by the applicant requires an amendment-
I'm sorry, did you introduce yourself?
My name is Rosalyn Ng. I'm Associate Planner of the Planning Department, and I'm the project manager for this project.
Great.
As I mentioned, the project as proposed by the applicant requires an amendment to the 1995 adopted use permit and development agreement, since these documents granted Pacific View legal vested rights for the ultimate build-out of the entire property. A negative decoration has been prepared for the project and was circulated for public comments. Staff received comments from the nearby residents, but none were environment-impacted-related. These comments were addressed in the staff report of the planning commission. Staff reviewed the submitted status report of the development agreement submitted by the applicant and found that Pacific View has complied in good faith with the condition of the agreement. The planning commission, on August the 9th, determined that the project is consistent with the city's general plan and zoning classifications and meets the required use permit findings. The planning commission therefore recommending approval of the project. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Rosalyn. Does the council have any questions or staff? Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any comments before I open it up to public comment? All right, we'll open up for public comment. Applicants, speak first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I didn't see anybody running up to the podium there, Denny.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Dennis O'Neill, and I'm here representing Pacific View Memorial Park on their applications for an amendment to their use permit and development agreement to eliminate the future construction of a large community mausoleum building and replace it with smaller family mausoleum structures. When we presented our case at the planning commission on August 9th, we reviewed with the planning commission the concerns of some of the residents and the surrounding Spyglass Hills community over the proposed project as applied for by Pacific View. We also discussed with the planning commission the efforts that we engaged in in reaching out to the community and listening to their concerns, and held a series of meetings with the Board of Directors, with the Spyglass Hills Community Association. As a result of those meetings, we did reach an agreement on a number of concessions, which are all included in the amendment to the development agreement, most notably the elimination of three of the family museum. We originally applied for nine, been reduced to six, and also conditions requiring extensive landscape screening around the family mausolea. As a result of reaching these agreements, we are pleased that the Board of Directors of the homeowners' association at Spyglass Hills did submit a letter of support of the Pacific View applications, and in fact, came to the planning commission meeting and testified in that in support. And I see that there is a representative from the board here this evening, and I trust that he will also make a statement on the record in support. Of course, we are also pleased that the planning commission unanimously approved these applications, recommended approval to this, to this body. So I am joined this evening by Robert Motzken, the Director of Cemetery Development and Construction, representing the ownership SCI, Ruby Lewis, who's the Pacific View General Manager, and Randy McDaniel, he's with the architectural firm of Clark &amp; Green. I'm going to introduce Ruby Lewis, who'll make a brief statement on the history and goals, background of Pacific View. Thereafter, Randy McDaniel will present our PowerPoint case. I'd like to reserve time, by way of rebuttal, to clarify or answer any questions that might come up during the public testimony. So now, I would like to introduce Ruby Lewis.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. As Mr. O'Neill stated, my name is Ruby Lewis, and I'm the General Manager of Pacific View Memorial Park. From the first day in 1958, almost 50 years ago, when we opened our gates in Corona del Mar, it's been our purpose that everything established in the park would remind visitors of the beauty and the lives of those who are honored there. This has been created over the years throughout the grounds: private estate gardens, graceful arches in our mausoleums, sloping lawns, open courtyards, beautiful landscaping, and several water features, all express the joy of life and make visits to Pacific View comforting and gentle to the memory. The acquisition of Pacific View by Service Corporation International in 1991 didn't change our purpose. It only enhanced our ability and resources to serve our families and the community. Approximately 90% of our land was developed with an open space concept in mind. This uniqueness will never change, and what we're proposing in our application to amend will definitely add to the open space character of our cemetery. Instead of building the large community mausoleum currently entitled in Building Site H in the park, we're proposing to provide much smaller, private, family mausoleums and estate gardens. You'll see, as the plan is explained, that the site plan, landscape screening, and buffering will definitely enhance the area of the park. The people from our community who choose our park as a final resting place desire different types of interments and memorialization options for their loved ones. These are very personal decisions on their part. This proposed amendment is a direct result of trying to accommodate requests from families that utilize Pacific View. By providing a variety of quality choices desired by our community, we're attempting to satisfy the wide range of needs that are requested of us. In closing, the management and staff of Pacific View consistently give back to our community. We'll be hosting our 50th Annual Memorial Day Program in 2008 in conjunction with the American Legion Newport Harbor Post 291, in addition to presenting our 12th Annual Celebration of Life programs each December. We honor our fallen by providing services and burial plots at no charge to firefighters and police officers who die in the line of duty, and to our soldiers who are killed at war. We are proud of what we stand for and will continue to uphold our promise to the community, preserving memories that transcend generations with dignity and honor. Maintaining the overall beauty of the park is absolutely vital to the company and I. We believe this amendment request does just that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, Randy McDaniel. I'm the landscape architect representing Pacific View Memorial Park, and it's my job to take this 200-plus staff report and consolidate it into a graphic presentation, a brief graphic presentation for your consideration. First, starting with the context of Pacific View Memorial Park, for those of you that don't know where it's located, it's located near the Big Canyon Reservoir, and the southern boundary is adjacent to the San Juan Keen Hills Road, and the northern and eastern boundaries are adjacent to residential, single-family residential properties. The specific project site is located in the, would be the southern, southeastern portion of Pacific View Memorial Park. We'll zoom into that area. The existing site, as you can see, this is an aerial with some existing tree macing. This is the Spyglass Hills Homeowners Association, some single-family residential properties. This slope here is the homeowners' association's slope maintained by the homeowners' association. And this area in here is a landscape buffer, which is approximately 80 feet deep, maintained by Pacific View Memorial Park to buffer the residents from the cemetery property. As you can see also, that the existing Building Site H is located substantially set back from the residential properties, and you can see in sections that this is also well below the residential properties. The existing, just to give you an overview of the master plan, this is the approved master plan, and just the context of the site and the project site. This is the administration building and chapel. There's some existing community mausoleums along the eastern property, portion of the property. And as Ruby mentioned, that 90% of the park is open space, and you can see that in this area where this is lawn burial, existing lawn burial. This is the proposed project site. The Pacific View Memorial Park is entitled to construct this 7,200 square foot community mausoleum, and the initial request was for nine family mausolea, and this is the area indicated, as well as crypt wall mausolea were to be, we're entitled to build crypt wall mausolea along the buffer zone, at the bottom of the buffer zone area. This is an artist rendition of the community mausolea, and just showing what we're entitled to build. And this is an artist rendition of the nine family mausoleum, which we're not requesting at this time, but this was our initial request. And as a result of community workshops and whatnot, we've made some adjustments. And I just want to show you some photos of the existing community mausoleums on site. You see these photos in this location, the left side of the screen, and then a crypt wall mausoleum, just to give you an idea, when I use these terms, what they mean. And estate gardens would be terraced into the slope. This is existing estate gardens at Pacific View Memorial Park. This would be lawn burial. And then, these are examples of family mausolea, some examples of what could be built if this is approved. Also, the staff put together photo simulations based on our seminal and based on our initial nine-family mausolea request in estate gardens. This is a result of the next series of slides I'll go through, basically give you views from Little River Circle would be one view, and Mountain Circle is another view. And just to give you a little bit of background of why these viewpoints were selected, this, along the southeastern property line here, the only place you can really get a glimpse of the project site, which is located in this area, is from this, a little peak from this portion at one Little River Circle. Say that five times fast. So going into that, we have a view, the photo simulation from the staff, showing the community mausoleum, what it would look like, and you don't see it. So that's the community mausoleum from Little River Circle, and that would be the family mausoleum from Little River Circle. And you can see some additional trees popped up there. You wouldn't see the family mausolea. Going over to the Monterey Circle viewpoint, these homes along this edge would have, they're up higher, and you have a better view of the overall site, and so that's why we, why there was a second simulation provided, and this is the best example, where there's a peak through some trees. This, I think, five Monterey Circle has the best view of the site. And this would be the community mausoleum, you can see in the foreground, you can see the homeowners' association trees in the, actually, immediate foreground. And basically, what you see is a roof, and in the background, you see the developed Pacific View Memorial Park with lawn burial. This is the proposed, or this would be the initial request for nine family mausolea build-out. So you see the tree buffering provided, and these would be the estate gardens, which you basically don't see it, so. And if I'm going too fast, let me know. I just wanted to kind of go through, and if you have any questions at the end, we'll be here to answer them. As Mr. O'Neill mentioned, that there was extensive community outreach, and it culminated with meetings with the homeowners' association board, and a number of deal points were reached with the board, and I'll walk you through those, zooming into that area again. One of the first deal points was the deletion of three of the nine, so what we end up with is six family mausoleum. A maximum of six family mausoleum can only be constructed in this area now, totaling 2,024 square feet, which is over a 72% reduction from the community mausolea. Also, another deal point would be to reduce the size of these two family mausolea, reducing the height two feet and reducing the depth by five feet. So reducing the size of these two, these four, which are within the envelope of the approved community mausolea, would remain the 17 by 22 by 17 building envelope. Pacific View would also be willing to delay the crypt wall construction along Building Site H. You can see it, and it's the crypt wall that's outlined in blue, so it's all along the residential properties at the base of the buffer area. Until, so anyways, that would be deleted, or not deleted, but delayed until 2014. Also agreed to plant additional landscape screening. Initially, two trees per building site would be planted prior to construction of a family mausolea. Whether or not the family mausolea was to be constructed in the future, those trees would be planted on this slope. In addition to that, an additional, one 48-inch box per family mausolea at the time of construction would be planted adjacent to the, you know, screening the side or rear elevations. In addition to that, another tree was agreed to be planted, a 38-inch box tree in the front elevation, for a total of more than 24 additional trees, enhancing the landscape and buffering of these family mausolea. This is a section showing the estate gardens, and we agreed to terrace them into the slope, and you can see it's set back into the slope with some planting on the uphill side. And this also shows a potential family mausolea, also terraced into the slope with landscape buffering, and you can see as the trees are taller than the, they would be taller at planting than the tree, than the family mausoleum going in. Also, existing in the development agreement, there's a 430-foot height limitation. This dotted line indicates that area, the limitation from the property line to that dotted line, that limitation basically precludes anything going above the 430-foot height limitation, no trees, no buildings, et cetera. The shaded area is the extension, basically the new 430-foot limit zone to include Building Sites E, F, and G. There's some additional deal points that the- There's some additional deal points that the Pacific View agreed to do, and they're in your staff report. But one, just touching on one, additional one, that they also agreed to not amend the development agreement for a minimum of 15 years. And with that, I'm open to any questions.
Okay, does council have any questions of this gentleman? Okay, thank you, sir. Can you get the lights? All right, I'm just going to open this up for public comment. Why don't we move to that? Or actually, we have opened it for public comment. I'll invite the rest of the public up.
Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Bruce Nye. I'm the vice president and treasurer of the Board of Directors of Spyglass Hill Homeowners' Association. Do I need to sign in here as a procedure lawyer?
No, that's fine.
As Dennis O'Neill commented, we met with, the Board of Directors met with Pacific View and their service providers on several occasions to come to an agreement, which we have done so. And over the course of that, there are several meetings, we came to the agreement that you have in front of you. And I wish to tell you that the Board of Directors of Spyglass Hill endorses the amendment to the development agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else that would like to speak on this matter?
Mayor Rosansky, council members, my name is Sean Barrie. I live at number five Monterey Circle. A few years ago, when I bought my house, I was shown the developmental agreement that was recorded, and was told that in front of my house, only a big community mausoleum is allowed to be built. And I went back and forth with my wife, and we looked at it and noticed that, well, it looks like a clubhouse down the street, that's no problem, and we bought the property and spent a lot of money, like the stories of some other neighbors. Specifically, I asked if this can be changed. I was told that section number 74 in the developmental agreement says that this can only be changed based on this agreement. And they put the word "this agreement" in section, in this paragraph. And when I asked, well, what does it mean? They said that, well, it's only based on the regulations of this agreement. This agreement specifically prohibit building of any family mausoleum in Area 8. I believe that this will affect, and I believe that I have had the realtors and also appraiser looked at my house and said that this will negatively affect the price of my property. I do believe that this is not fair to us to change this. I don't know if it is legal or not. This is a subject that we have to look at it. I know that the board of direct, the board of the association board has gotten to the agreement, and I know that legally to spend money on the attorney's lawyer was too expensive for the association as well. I do, well, I want to ask you that if you look at these pictures, okay, and the schematic that we were shown, how these huge creatures, I don't know if this is 17 feet or not, can be covered by the trees? I don't think so. But even if it is, I believe that making only six families happy, instead of that the city could, could the crypts for 1,200, because the community mausoleum would accommodate 1,200 crypts, is not reasonable, I don't think. Maybe in the future, in 10 years, we'll notice that, well, we don't have enough space in this cemetery. Now I have to take my loved one to another city for burial. That is not reasonable to me. I believe it's not fair. And I respectfully ask the council members to look at this object, and if they have to approve it, then at least, why not this family mausoleum be look like a community mausoleum? Not, instead of being a granite, so shiny that everybody come to the backyard, look at it, say, oh my God, this is a Eastern-style cemetery, instead of being a very nice memorial park. And I would like to give you these pictures that how it right now look like. When you enter the memorial park, it's just like park. It's flat. And that is where it was supposed to be. Now, 17 feet by 22 feet by 17 feet out of granite, you can imagine that, well, are we going to the city? We make only six families happy. We sacrifice 1,200 families. We make all these neighbors unhappy. Unfortunately, the neighbors didn't show up today, because they had the expression from Planning Commission that this is already done deal to the resident of the year. And they decided that, well, it's no point to come here to oppose. But if you have to approve it, please change it and ask them to, instead of making granite roof tile with a star core, just like a community mausoleum. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else that'd like to public, comment from the public?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Phil Gillespie. I'm a former resident of Newport Beach, about 21 years, and now I reside in Laguna Beach. At the time of my mother's birth in the city of Tustin, my grandparents, her parents, were farmers, bean farmers on the Irvine Ranch at that time. My grandfather picked beans, and my grandmother cooked for all the ranch hands. My other set of grandparents owned a small grocery store in Santa Ana. After my grandparents passed away, starting in the late 50s, the last passing away in 1980, they were interred in another cemetery here in Orange County. My father passed away about 1987 and was interred at a spot in Pacific View in a crypt. All of our family historically has been, opted for crypt burial rather than ground burial. When my mother was quite ill and ready to pass away in the 90s, I went to the other cemetery where the grandparents were, and I was just a little disappointed in how it looked. It was an older one. I had grandparents in one section, grandparents in another. My mother would have been in another section. So what I really desired to do was to bring everybody together. And I know that wasn't possible there, but I wanted someplace closer to where I lived. So I went to Pacific View and met with one of their counselors and asked if they had space where I could buy individual crypts, but they'd all be together. That was not available. So my option was to build my own private estate mausoleum. We purchased a piece of property, and the plans were submitted. And I have been the first owner of a private estate mausoleum. I had my grandparents disinterred from the other cemetery, and they were all brought to Pacific View. Their remains were recasqued and placed inside the mausoleum. It's a beautiful structure, looking very much like that, made of rose granite. I think the most important thing for me, on a personal note, is that inside the mausoleum, I just completed putting a lot of memorabilia that belonged to my parents and grandparents, photographs, newspaper articles, awards, many things, also involved with my life, so that if anyone who had, did not know anything about me or my family, were to go inside and spend about 10 minutes, they could easily kind of piece together a picture of who I was and my family. And it's very comforting for me when I go in there, because when, once I go in, I'm surrounded by my family. They're, they're all there. Of course, they're not there, their remains are there, but still, it's very comforting for me. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else that would like to speak on this matter, on the public? All right, so you know, and I'll close the public comment section. Councilman Curry, do you have a?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. This is located in District 7. And I've had the opportunity over the past several weeks to meet both with the neighbors and with the applicant, and to review these plans. I've stood on Dr. Barrie's backyard and had the opportunity to view the site from his perspective, and also to talk with many of the neighbors in the Spyglass area, and spend some time with the applicant on the property, looking at alternatives of what could be done. And I will, I will say to my colleagues that this plan that we have before us today is significantly different than the one that was first proposed. And I believe the applicant has done an outstanding job of working with the community to shield the impacts of these mausoleum from the neighbors in a very aesthetically pleasing way, to reduce the number of mausoleum, and in particular, to work with the Spyglass Hills Homeowners' Association to address their concerns as a group, and to ensure going forward that this property is developed in a way that is compatible with the neighborhood and compatible with the neighbors. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I would move the item and approval of the resolution as presented by staff.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, we have motion and a second. Is there any further comment by council? Please vote.
Motion carries.
Madam Clerk, public comments?
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
My name is Pam Bassetich. I live on the peninsula. And I'd like to just briefly address the rehab situation, which we are continuing to work on. I'd like to thank you all very much for the effort you've put into this in the last few months. I feel that we're really at a critical place now. Everyone's working together. Everyone's trying to make progress. If we find that we have to go forward with the moratorium, I encourage you to work hard to close the loopholes that are still in the moratorium. You are all well aware now of those of us that are surrounded by rehabs on all sides of us, and new ones that are, seem to be appearing at all times. We need to make sure that the moratorium does not let any further rehabs of any size, six and unders included, during the time that the moratorium is continued until we get resolution to this, this problem. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Laura Curran. I live in Corona del Mar. I'm here speaking on behalf of residents who live on Carnation, Dahlia, and Fernley. And I've assembled a petition which has 60 signatures from residents on those streets, which has been distributed to you as well. So I'll read the text. To Newport Beach City Council members and to Planning Commission members, as Corona del Mar residents, we support the strict regulation of group home use to preserve the residential and small-town character and quality of life for residents, businesses, visitors, and the entire neighborhood. As you may be aware, applications are currently in process for group homes in Corona del Mar. So a situation that really most of us were not that familiar with is now of greater interest to residents, which is often how these things happen. We request you as residents, as council members, to consider and include the following in the existing and upcoming Newport Beach Draft Code Amendment Number 2,007-005, including end the over-concentration institutionalization of group homes and residential treatment centers in coastal neighborhoods. I'll paraphrase, require conditional use permits. Do not allow group homes within 1,000 feet of a drinking or eating establishment. This is both for public safety and for the benefit of those being treated. No extension of the moratorium. Focus on enacting good regulation. We're particularly interested in facility licensing and accurate classification of integral facilities with no loopholes for six and under, given the extensive numbers of 1.5 and R2s in Corona del Mar. Parking, enforce existing residential parking standards for all new group homes, and in particular, no grandfathering of non-compliant parking when a new use is established. And finally, enforcement, provide sufficient police and code enforcement staff for timely 24/7 response to resident and business concerns. We appreciate your attention and work on this matter, and I assume you all received a copy. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Anyone else?
Denise Obermann. Good evening, council. I'm a resident of Newport Beach. Just to follow up to what's been said by the prior two speakers, we do appreciate the incredible level of effort that has gone in to building revised ordinances and to come up with a good program of use management for the city relative to group home uses. Time is of the essence. The moratorium was originally enacted in April in response to a citizens' petition. The moratorium had significant loopholes in the way it's crafted, and so there continues to be expansion of both existing group home businesses and the development of new businesses and facilities. Why is, it's been over six and a half months, and for reasons that are not, not known or justifiable to us, quite frankly, the city has been unable to come up with ordinances. The citizens have invested to date over $100,000 with legal research and review and interface with the various departments of the city and the functions associated with review and ordinance development. And we don't have a clear picture as to the status of our input and our recommendations, but we remain optimistic with the guidance of Councilman Hen and the others of you that support this initiative. Just very quickly, I wanted to, to put on the record that at the time that we started and subsequently, a number of the business operators felt that there were only a few people that were coming into the city council meeting that would sit here till all hours of the night. Let me tell you that our current count for the concerned citizens of Newport Beach is that we have over 1,500 citizens that have expressed formal and active support to implementation of a good program to regulate group home uses. In the event that the, the legal parameters and what local government can do continues to remain a mystery, I'd just like to take a moment to read some key elements that we are convinced in, that we believe are legally proven, can be included in local regulations. One is, there can be a requirement for business licenses. In fact, these group home businesses are businesses, including the ones that are six and under licensed. And consistent with other businesses in Newport Beach, including home businesses, there is a requirement to register businesses and define what the use is. Number two, six and under licensed and six and under unlicensed are not both permitted by right, and that's something that has been prevalent in the city's recommendations through this date. So we just do want to clarify that only standalone six-and-under licensed facilities that are not part of an integral facilities have certain rights associated with being similar to single-family dwellings. There's some other things. Currently, residential care and treatment facilities are permitted uses in R1, 5, and R2. There is no legal requirement that group homes need to be allowed in these zones. There is sufficient housing to, to allow for the disabled to be, to be housed at reasonable levels in this community and without discrimination. That designation has promoted heavy concentration, in fact, over-concentration in our dense residential communities. There is nothing in the law that says there cannot be a requirement for conditional use review and permitting. And there is nothing in the law that says in the name of nondiscrimination that the city needs to have a policy and practice of non-enforcement, of fire, health, and safety, and other local codes that would be applicable to other residences. So we do have over-concentration. The city has agreed to that. Councilperson Dagel has, has affirmed that position in her recent experience of the League of Cities. I'm going to submit a position statement, and we do urge the city to, to get on with it and let you know that you have full support of the citizens, but that time is of the essence. I'd like to submit this into record. This Saturday, I had a conversation with the manager of group home operator.
Okay, Ms. Obermann, I've given you a lot of leeway here. Your time is up.
I'm done. 157 facilities.
Thank you. Please take your seat. Thank you. Anybody else that wants to make a public comment?
Good evening, council. My name is Lori Morris. I'm from West Newport. I would like to thank Councilwoman Dagel for her work, the latest work, and in this and getting involved to help our city with this issue. It is very much appreciated. And we're very heartened to hear that you're getting involved in this in such a big way. It's very nice to hear. And I would like to thank Councilman Hen for staying involved and working towards a resolution to the huge problem that group homes have brought to our community in West Newport with over-concentration. and anywhere else in the community where money can be made. The issue that has been brought forward, as Ms. Bassetich said, with the moratorium is an issue that must be kept in the front burner, and I'm glad she brought it here to the council tonight. We cannot be complacent. So I would like to restate that residents want the city to add to that moratorium when it is extended, as it looks like it's going to be extended, that no new group homes, licensed or unlicensed, six and under or seven and over, be permitted. No expansion of existing group homes through illegal construction be permitted, and if found expanding illegally during the moratorium, that they not be allowed to reopen in the city of Newport Beach. Illegal actions must have consequences, and they have to be significant, and they must matter. And the only thing that matters to operators is money. So I ask for this consideration, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am.
Dick Nichols, Corona del Mar. I'd like to thank the city for imposing the integral condition on group home in Corona del Mar that was both halves of a duplex. That was obviously a proper thing to do. It prevented the person from moving in and just establishing a group home there, even though we have a moratorium. And I think that it's an indication that the methods that we had suggested will work, and will work well, and we can have a big effect on this. Now with the use of the integral home idea, we can come back on these large homes that have multiples numbers, 20, 30, all located in an area, and that's definitely commercial. A use permit on a commercial facility that is a hotel as big as some of our bigger hotels, that doesn't make sense to be in a residential area. So it's easy to foreclose on these things. We need to keep at it, and I'm very pleased to see that you are responding. Thank you.
Gil?
Yes, hi. My name is Dolores Otting. I live in Newport Beach. I'm here on this, on public comments because I want to thank Alicia Robinson from the Daily Pilot for letting us know that Metropolitan Water District will soon be adding fluoride to our water. And we've been so lucky until this day in time that we don't have, that we didn't have fluoride in our water. And so, of course, I started to look up fluoride, you know? Why not? And even though I'm laughing, it's very sad and scary. It started in the 1940s, and they don't even have any evidence that it does anything. As a matter of fact, ingesting fluoride to stop cavities is probably, doesn't do anything at all. And I just, and I didn't go home during the break because I didn't have enough time to go back and forth, and I had a lot of documentation, so I'm just going to take a minute and read this one page. And there are more countries besides this, but the first country on this list that's banned fluoride is China. And I mean, we're going to have the Olympics there this year, and they're going to have to have asthma medication, masks for breathing, and ibuprofen, because that's how polluted it is. And every day in the Wall Street Journal, they're finding more water and, you know, that's polluted from all kinds of things. But they had the sense enough to know that there wasn't anything good about fluoride and didn't want to hurt their residents, which I thought was astounding. Austria doesn't allow fluoride, Belgium, Finland, Germany, Denmark, Norway, Sweden, the Netherlands, Hungary, Japan, and this is an older one, and they have more, you know, countries today. Only 5% of the world population has fluoride in their water, and of this, 50% of them live in North America. And there haven't been any studies at all that said that fluoride is any good. As a matter of fact, children nowadays have more cavities than they used to have. So I just think it's sad, and I don't know what we can do. I'm kind of glad that there, I'm very happy we have fish in the world because thank goodness for the smelt up in the Delta area, Northern California, so we won't get as much metropolitan water this coming year. I know, Dawn, that sounds crazy. But in the meantime, what does it take to take care of the public? And I mean, I started getting on this water kick because I remembered the Toilet-to-Tap was going to be coming online in January, and so, of course, needless to say, I've been talking with the Orange County Water District and Fountain Valley and in Anaheim, and so they're going to be giving me a list of what they test for. And I guess my problem with all this is that now that we have the Back Bay, or the opportunity, now that we have the Back Bay Science Center, and we're going to be testing water for the ocean and for the fish and what comes downstream, I'm hoping that we'll be doing more testing of our own water supply, and we'll determine what these fluoride levels are, because we live in a warm climate, and as a result of which, we actually will be having more fluoride than people that live in cold climates and don't exercise. And so, and there is some great health risks, but I promise that I'll make copies of the stuff I have at home and bring it to you, because it's really a major concern, and I'm smiling, but it's nothing to smile about. I mean, it's been attributed to bone cancer in young males, breast cancer, it's, there's a lot of things. Thank you.
Thank you, Dolores. Anyone else that wants to speak on public comments?
I'm going to change the subject a little bit. My name is Terry Welsh, and I'm the chairperson. I'm the chairperson of the Banning Ranch Park and Preserve Task Force, and we've been around for about eight years, and our goal is to create an open space and wildlife reserves slash public wilderness park on the entire Banning Ranch. And for the newer council members who are not entirely clear on our position, this means that there is no homes, no hotel, and no businesses on Banning Ranch, and rather the entire property be purchased at a price fair to the public, but more importantly, fair to the owners, and the entire area be preserved. One of our mantras has always been, this is a very doable project, the only thing that's stopping us is this enormous amount of money, enormous amount of work, and a very long time. But when we look in the future and see our success, we see us succeeding not just because local grassroots groups such as ourselves worked at it, but we worked in sync and on the same page as the various cities and county, state, but most importantly, Newport Beach. I also want to make one thing really clear. None of us in our task force expect or intend for the city of Newport Beach to purchase Banning Ranch. It's just too expensive. The city doesn't have that kind of money in its coffers, and we don't expect the city to levy a property tax to raise that entire money necessary to purchase this area. But I think that it is quite reasonable that the city really step up and take a lead in seeing that this entire area be purchased, and I think it's, at the bare minimum, the city should conduct an appraisal of this property, and then conduct a serious feasibility study to see where that money that it will take to buy this property can come from. Work with the people that draft the park bonds, work with the various land trusts, but really, really give it a serious commitment, and even form a Banning Ranch Acquisition Committee, make it an official committee of the city of Newport Beach. If there's not enough manpower within City Hall, get the lay public to participate. I know the owners are laying the groundwork for another development. Please don't think that this development is inevitable, or much worse, a done deal. When we started this task force, they told us that the Taylor Woodrow Project was a done deal. It was even told us by the Sierra Club, don't, don't, and they, Taylor Woodrow walked away from the project. It's very likely that this current development proposal will again fail. But nonetheless, we don't have unlimited time. We have to get going on this. Finally, I really, really would like all of you to really honor that general plan. When, show the world that when Newport Beach makes it a priority for open space at Banning Ranch, it really means something, and it's not just something to get around, but the city will acquire that property. I don't have to tell you that this idea of preserving the area is tremendously popular, and, you know, we just had time at the fair, or I admit, there was one person that came by and didn't want, but only one. Finally, last thing I want to say really quickly is that the Sierra Club, and I want to thank the mayor for inviting me to talk specifically about the Sierra Club, had a fundraiser earlier this year, and in Orange County, one of the subjects they used was Banning Ranch to try to get people to contribute to the Sierra Club. And they asked people in the Sierra Club to fill out these postcards and return them, and the Sierra Club Angeles chapter recently gave them to me. And I haven't actually counted them, there's about 200, 300 here, and each of them is filled out by a person, and it's just a demonstration of the incredible public support for preserving that entire area. Now, mayor, if it's okay with you, maybe I'll hang on to these until Banning Ranch is on the official agenda for the city council, and then maybe make a more ceremonious handover of these. But I just, you know, they're here, they're real, and that's all I have to say. Any questions? Please feel free to ask.
Thank you, Terry. I think Councilwoman.
Mr. Welsh, did you forget to mention the 38, 30-acre active sports park that would be a part of that development?
Yes, the Banning Ranch Park and Preserve Task Force realizes that, you know, we don't have a problem with there being sports fields on the entire area.
I just wanted to make that clear.
Yeah. This is not going to be an off-limits nature preserve. It's going to be something the public can enjoy, kind of like Fairview Park and Costa Mesa. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. Terry?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Jan Vanas, Newport Heights. I am also very involved with the Banning Ranch, and I was a member of the General Plan Advisory Committee of G-PAC for three years, and the public of Newport Beach recently voted for the land use plan of the new general plan, and both organizations recommended open space for Banning Ranch as the top priority, and that's the official city policy for that property to be open space, and the only way we're going to be able to guarantee it to be open space is to acquire it. So I would ask that the city council take a very proactive, early effort to acquire the Banning Ranch. Rather than just letting it slide there, I think we need to take advantage of some of the recent successes in public space, open space acquisitions, such as a Bolsa Chica, where 100 acres of the Bolsa Chica Mesa were acquired with $65 million of Prop 50 money a couple of years ago. And I think that Newport Beach perhaps could be involved with such, you know, advocating such a bond issue for the Banning Ranch. Prop 84 provides some money, and let's face it, the Banning Ranch is the last big open space available in coastal Orange County. It would be a perfect complement to the Orange Coast River Park, and it would act as an ecological staircase for the mouth of the San Ana River. The ecological benefits of Banning Ranch would rival those of Upper Newport Bay and Bolsa Chica. So I ask, as a citizen of Newport Beach, as a citizen or as a member of the G-PAC Committee, and in respect to the general plan of the city of Newport Beach, that we do take an active effort to acquire the whole Banning Ranch's open space, including the 30 acres for sports park. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Anyone else want to speak on public comments? All right, saying no one, public comments is closed. Move on to oral reports from City Council on committee activities. We'll start with Councilwoman Gardner. Anything to report?
We had a meeting this week with part of the Newport Coast Advisory Committee and others on a fire lane issue. The county had signed off on some things, and our fire marshal is concerned about the ability of some of our trucks to get through without the fire lanes being marked, and I'm pleased to report we made good progress in our discussions and our moving forward.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dagel? Councilwoman Webb?
None.
Councilwoman Hen?
None.
Councilwoman Curry?
None.
Solich?
None.
I have none. Let's move on to our Planning Commission report.
Mayor, and members of City Council, we have two different Planning Commission meetings that have occurred since we last reported to you, August, excuse me, August 23rd. The group home ordinance was considered again after first being presented in the June meeting. The item was continued until the 20th next week to incorporate additional comments received from concerned citizens of Newport Beach, including the notion of an overlay zone. On the 6th of September, the Planning Commission considered a general plan amendment, planned community development text amendment, and amendment to a use permit for Liberty Baptist Church on Jamboree at Bison. That was approved to allow expansion of classroom facilities, including a new gymnasium, and the application for Panini Cafe for a use permit was continued until the 20th also to allow them time to come up with more parking. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions of Mr. Lebo? Good evening. Okay, moving on to our next item is item number 21, which I mentioned earlier. Councilmember Solich would like to ask that this be taken off calendar. I'll let him.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since this item was first introduced to the city council, we have entered into negotiations with the Irvine Company on a development agreement, which involves a substantial amount of park fees being generated in Newport Center. So with that in mind, I think it would be appropriate to go ahead and table this item and bring it back at some future date after we have dealt with the Newport Center Development Agreement and brought that before the city council. So with that in mind, I'll move that this item be removed from, be tabled and removed from the calendar.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I'll open up for public comment. Saying no one, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, and we have our last agenda item. I believe it's a supplemental item, and that's item number 22. Back here for one second. Okay, item number 22 is a resolution 2007- whatever, creating an ad hoc committee on group residential legal review. Just quickly, since this report has come out and this has been added to our agenda, I've had some discussions about this with Councilmember Hen, and I'm going to let him take over here, but we discussed this, and we think a different approach is in order, and he's going to describe that and the reasons for it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the staff report indicates, this is an issue that is highly complex from both a legal and regulatory standpoint. It's also an issue that has drawn passionate participants on all sides, and we certainly need to carefully, extremely carefully, actually, evaluate and fulfill our mandate, the mandate that we have set for ourselves and the mandate that we have set for the city attorney and other staff office, to regulate the issue of group homes and intense residential occupancies to the maximum possible degree consistent with the law. The original resolution that was prepared for tonight was to hire an additional set of outside counsel, special counsel, to report to the city council to help it sort out the issues and arrive at the best and most unbiased decision that it can make, and to authorize the city council, or the mayor, I should say, to name three members of the city council to serve on a subcommittee to interview and recommend to the full city council one or more law firms that it might hire for that purpose. Then the city council would make that final decision, and the law firm would be hired. Today, the city attorney, who I believe supported the original recommendation that was included in the resolution tonight, voluntarily suggested a further expansion of that idea, and that is to, for the city council to hire outside counsel to be its sole legal advisor on this issue. And therefore, the city attorney has indicated that she would cooperate fully and that ask our existing outside counsel to cooperate fully in transitioning to the newly named outside counsel for this purpose, and that that outside counsel would then serve at the city council's pleasure in finalizing our deliberations on this issue. I'm in agreement with that recommendation, and I want to commend the city attorney. Robin, thank you for making that recommendation. I think it is an excellent one. It clears the way for this issue to be efficiently and fully deliberated. The, this change, this expansion of scope, I think, provides for a cleaner and more unified approach. Does save some, the city some money, I believe, because we'll have one. save some, the city some money, I believe, because we'll have one less outside counsel to deal with and to pay along the way. And I think it frees the city attorney to do other good work on behalf of the city that's been piling up on her desk while she's been focusing so much time on this issue. And so I think it's a, it's a win for everyone. And so I would propose to my colleagues that this is something that we should approve and get going with immediately such that we can provide to the full city council a recommendation at the meeting of September the twenty-fifth, and therefore be positioned to move ahead expeditiously, expeditiously with this issue. And I know the mayor has had conversation with Robin. I believe his sentiments are similar to mine, and I would like to turn it back over to the mayor for comments.
Thank you, Mike. Yes, I've also talked with the city attorney about this, and Mike, and I, I agree that this issue has kind of taken on a life of its own, and, and we really need to get focused on it, free up the city attorney, because I know there are plenty of things that I'd like her to do that she's not doing on other matters, and hopefully bring a quicker and, and more agreeable resolution to the whole issue. So I imagine that by doing this, as, and something that we didn't really discuss, but was highlighted by Mr. Lebo's comments about next planning commission meeting, where they're supposed to take this issue up again, I imagine if, that we're bringing in new counsel, that, that may create a little bit of a problem to do that. I don't know what your thoughts are on that, Mike, but that we might want to bring in the council to get up to speed on the issues. I mean, first of all, we have, the committee has to be formed, we have to meet, we have to probably interview some firms. Imagine it'll take some time to do that. And then they're going to need some time to get up to speed on the issue. So I imagine that there's going to be some delay involved with planning commission moving forward with what they're doing in order to accomplish this. I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
Well, I guess I'd, I'd like the planning commission to make the determination. I could see where they might conclude, that the issues are fairly well, well laid out at least for them to consider. And, but really, it's their proceeding. I think they should make the decision.
Yeah. Well, I guess what I'm saying is, I wouldn't be surprised if that, that is a result that comes out of this. But, you know, I think we all have the same goal of having a, a well-crafted ordinance, something that's supportable and defensible, and that certainly is non-discriminatory. So I-
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Selich.
Got a question. I was all in tune with the staff report till this latest suggestion came up, and now you've really thrown me for a loop here on this thing, particularly in regards to the, to the, to the planning commission. And it was my understanding we were looking at legal counsel for the city council and not to get into legal counsel for the, for, for the planning commission. And although on one hand, I can maybe see the logic of doing that, on the other hand, it seems that it's going to unnecessarily delay the planning commission's deliberations on this unless we give them some direction to continue on and not have this process slow up what they're doing. I mean, I just don't see why this should show up, slow up what the planning commission is doing and move through at a, you know, at the deliberative pace they've already established in this thing.
Well, I'd have to say I've been accused from time to time for advancing opinions to the planning commission. I shouldn't. And I was trying to be circumspect. But I'd have to say, I, I agree with you on that point, Councilmember Selich. I, I, the issues are laid out. There's no reason, in my view, they cannot continue to prosecute this forward.
And I might add that there's no reason why we can't continue doing the work that we've done in response to the last hearing up to the twentieth and to aid in that transition after that fact. So there's no reason why it has to stop at that point. I guess, like you said, it could be up to the planning commission to make that determination, but there's no reason for the continued efforts on, on our part to-
Well, I wouldn't want the planning commission to-
Exactly.
To, to slow down what they're doing in the expectation there's going to be a new legal counsel and a different set of opinions or different personnel or whatever involved in something. So, I mean, I think it should be part of what we're doing, that they should be instructed to move ahead and not be expecting some other legal counsel to step in here.
Well, I guess, first of all, can we instruct them to do that? Is that within our purview to tell them to?
I think it's, I, I, I think that what you can do is, 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 is give instruction to me, and I will continue on, and we will continue to serve the planning commission up to at least the next meeting. And come back with the recommendations and, and do the work that was requested, and go ahead and have that hearing on the twentieth, and then they can decide how they want to proceed after that hearing on the twentieth. This won't be resolved, and there won't be somebody before that period of time-
Maybe, maybe a better way to put it is, it's our expectations rather than instruction.
Yes, exactly.
Well, I'll just-
They don't get the hint on that one.
I, well, they didn't get the hint when I told them to speed it along either and have a special meeting. So I, I don't know. Maybe they'll listen to you better than me. But several of the planning commissioners did express uneasiness or with the, what we were proposing to begin with, and that was just that the council was going to hire a special counsel to review what we were going to look at after they were done. I would suspect that they're going to be even more reluctant to move forward, knowing that the council that is advising them, Goldfarb and Lippman, well, as well as our own city attorney, is no longer going to be handling that. And then to go forward based upon recommendations that they're getting from a law firm that we're basically terminating, I, I just would imagine that there's going to be some pushback on that. So we can recommend all we want, but I would think that at the end of the day, you know, they may not be willing to go along with, with our recommendation. So-
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Webb?
I, I guess, I'm supporting this based on, I think, that the attorney's office has, is getting drowned with the extra time that it's taking for this to be determined. But I feel that they have done an excellent job of putting together and trying to craft the ordinances that we are, have out there. And I would hope that any firm that we hire is going to not come up with a whole lot of new things, because I feel that it's been researched very adequately and significantly, and that, that I, at least from what I've seen and been following, I think that, that, I feel that, that we've had good representation up to now, and I'm, I'm hoping that, that a new firm is not going to be able to come up with a whole new direction to go. Because I, I think that, that they've reviewed many, many of the cases, and, and I feel confident that they've, they've done a good job.
Okay, anybody else have a comment on this? Before we open it up for public comment, I would like to discuss what the recommendation is here, because this recommendation was geared to hire a counsel to support, a, a legal counsel to support the city council on their deliberations. Now we're talking about a slightly different thing. I would imagine that this needs to be reworded somewhat, at least the first part. I'm looking at the city attorney. I'm assuming she's trying to find something.
Trying to find my staff report. I apologize. Oh, here it is.
Here it is, Dave.
As Robin's looking, I think the language in the resolution is generic enough that you don't have to change the resolution.
Well, it says one firm, hire one firm to support council's review of ordinances. And I, I think that's kind of where the language-
Well, that's what the recommendation says, and it's a characterization of what the resolution says. But the resolution literally says is a little bit broader than that, and I'm just noticing that and reading it now. It's especially point one.
I believe it's wide, it's broad enough to include.
Okay, you're right. I, I agree.
I think he's right.
I, I think he's right, too. I agree.
And I think the concept is not to slow the process down, but to have a smooth transition so that when the planning commission considers the actions that they had directed at the last meeting on the twentieth, they can look at those issues. And then if they have any additional issues or concerns, or if there are any more raised at the time, they can know that at that point in time, there will be a transition, and then the new counsel will take over that from the planning commission on. So that there's nothing, no intent to slow anything down here.
Okay. Sorry. Well, as to item number two here, appointing council members, there's three blanks. My intention is to appoint Councilmember Hen, Councilmember Gardner, and myself to the committee. And I'll, it doesn't ask for a chairman, but I'll appoint myself as the chairman of that committee. And so with that, did you want to say something, Mike, before I opened it to public comment?
No, other than I think that the resolution should include, include the encouragement to the planning commission to continue their efforts here at their next meeting on the issues.
Sure, we'll modify it to that. So I'll, I'll make that in the form of a motion before we go to public comment. Is there anybody? Okay, we have a second, motion in a second, and now public comment is open.
Hi, I'm Dolores Hoddington. I live in Newport Beach. So when are you going to be terminating Goldfarb and Lippman? That's going to be happening soon in?
I believe the intent would be that they would continue their efforts as directed and working with staff on this through the point of appointing a new counsel, and then that information would be relayed to the new counsel. All the existing ordinances and everything would be relayed to them. And then they would then go from there and making their own independent recommendations to the counsel on how to proceed, how to change the ordinances, et cetera.
Okay, so they're still going to be working with the planning commission because you haven't hired anybody yet?
Well, yeah, that way we would, that way we would prevent slowing down the process at this point in time.
Okay, so you're going to be hiring one attorney or maybe two attorneys you don't know yet, because first it was supposed to be one attorney and-
The, the, the point that, that my recommendation revolves around is the charter allows the council to hire their own legal counsel to represent on any individual matter if they wish. And, and it's my recommendation that they handle, they hire their own counsel to represent the city on this particular matter.
So it could be two attorneys, and we don't know yet. It all depends on what the firm is.
It's up to the counsel.
Well, it's probably going to be a law firm, and I imagine we'll have a number of attorneys. But I, I, at this point, I don't anticipate that we're going to hire more than one firm.
Right. Okay, so you'll be hiring a law firm, and you're going to be doing this through an ad hoc committee, and you've named those people. And then, then after you hire them, then they work solely for the city council?
Correct.
Okay, now, do they work solely for the city council ad hoc committee?
No, they work for the council in general.
So you'll be bringing things forward, or will you, so after you hire them, you're going to be disbanding the ad hoc committee?
Well, the, the, by its, the ordinance here, the term shall expire at the later of December thirty-first, two thousand and seven, or upon such times the city council adopts a new group residential use ordinance.
Right, that's my concern, okay? Is that, I'm just going to say it, is that you're going to have an ad hoc committee work with outside legal counsel and do new group home ordinances behind closed doors without the public knowing what's going on. That's my concern, because that's what it kind of says. It doesn't really explicitly say what your scope of work is. And you know me with ad hoc committees, okay? So that's what I'm afraid of. And these people have paid a lot of money. I mean, I, I'm still, still sickened by the fact that they had to hire an attorney to do this, the residents, because that seems to be the modus operandi nowadays. And that, and that's another thing that keeps on going on in the city is the ad hoc committees. So, so you need to-
Well, Dolores, the- You know what? Is there a reason why the committee would exist past the time that the council has appointed them?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, it's, it's quite specific what our role is. We're to identify, interview, and interview qualified legal firms, and to recommend a firmer firms. Those are our only responsibilities.
Except for that, except for the, that sentence that says the committee will be disbanded at the later date of December thirty-first, two thousand and seven, or upon adoption of new group residential use ordinances.
But I don't see that as giving us any new responsibilities.
But it means that you, what it is saying is that you can go behind closed doors and do all of the ordinances with your new attorney firm. But I-
No, no, it's not saying that, Dolores.
Well, you know, I, I think her-
It's not.
Well, in fairness, I think her point is, is that-
Thank you.
The duty of the committee is to interview firms, make a recommendation of the council, and at some point, the council will act on that recommendation. So once the council has hired an attorney, I think her point is, is that our mission is done, unless we have a different mission.
But, Mr. Mayor, it certainly could be that there's going to be some communication that needs to take place between the, the committee and, and the law firm in order to get things, you know, before the city council, you know, some direct-
Well-
So I, I can see as a communication link that committee may still want to exist.
Well, then maybe we need to expand the duty of the committee. But I see your point in that, based upon the duties that we've enunciated here, that the committee would not have to go on past the appointment. Now, if it's a matter of the committee is going to be a liaison with legal counsel to the city council as far as group home, you know, intense residential occupancy issues, maybe we do need to expand the-
Frankly, I'd be happy for it to expire upon council hiring, leave the city council hiring the new, the newly recruited council.
Okay, well-
I'm happy to let it expire at that time.
Well, that's good. I mean, we'll see. Thank you. I just, that bothered me. Thank you.
And so in that respect, I would so amend the resolution.
Right, I will amend.
And one last thing, also, so amend the resolution to end. Thank you. And one last thing is, I would hope that you would work with the new attorney firm, and that you would please use state definitions for everything, for what a group home is, for, for, for everything. We don't need to make up our own definitions of what they are. We need to be on the same playing field.
That's past this issue here that we're discussing.
Well, no, it's not. I mean, I have to say it somewhere because it's gotten crazy.
Public comment, public comment time. I know, next time. Come back night and two weeks.
Bob Rush. Interesting idea. What you're going to do is, you're going to end up transferring the time that should be spent at the planning level on complex issues will be transferred to the council level. And so if there's some dispute, some debate that should occur at the planning level and be, you know, significantly researched, it will fall on your shoulders. Because what will happen is, Goldfarb and Lippman will stand their ground and take their position. It will come up to you, and we're going to argue it again. And so you're going to spend the same amount of time. It's going to be up here, though, instead of down there. Goldfarb and Lippman, and, and this goes to Councilman Selich's comment, Goldfarb and Lippman have maybe a good firm. They've made significant errors in a number of areas, critical errors. One being, I pointed out to you in an email, where it would sanction up to four hundred and fifty, four hundred to four hundred and fifty homes in a fifty block area overnight, just on a draft wording that they had submitted. Whether you agree with that or not, I've gone over it with Dave Kiff. He agrees. It's, he says it's more like four hundred homes would be sanctioned overnight with that draft wording. But there's a number of issues. I mean, they're talking about small overlay areas, such as a street or two. We all know that these houses can spring up in a matter of weeks. And so to try to develop a small overlay in a street or two, we'd be chasing these areas of concentration throughout the city, you know, indefinitely. So Goldfarb and Lippman to stay, I think, is, is a, is a, is a mistake. To continue on at the planning level, it will only mean more time on your shoulders here. I think that we should employ, even though it means a slight delay, what you're going to do is save time at the planning commission and time at the council level overall on disputed items. And I think that we should get the new firm and employ them at the planning, at the planning commission level. I think it's, how, how much time do I have? Two and a half minutes left? Oh, great.
You don't have to use it all, Bob.
I, listen, I get it. Five minutes only every once in a while. I'm usually up here for three minutes.
Denise Oberman used your, the rest of your time.
Yeah, I guess she did, okay. I, I think it's a, I think it's a really commendable idea for, that, that, that Mike has come up with. I think it's commendable that Robin is, is recognizing the, some of the shortcomings of the situation that we have right now.
It was actually Robin's idea.
That's what I said, Robin. Oh, it was Robin's idea?
Yes, it was.
No, I think, okay. Whoever's idea it was, it's a commendable idea. But I think that there's probably more pressing things that Robin can attend to, and we need, we need, I, in my opinion, we need a firm that has a little bit more realistic approach to solving this problem. I don't think chasing over concentration, street to street, is in anybody's best interest. We'll be coming back here forever trying to remodify the overlay. But I wanted to speak tonight. I promised Mike that I'd keep my mouth closed, but I, and I'm doing-
You still have that opportunity.
I, I'm planning on doing it in the last minute. I was, but, no, but I don't think you want to spend time and debate this stuff up here in the council. The, the nitty gritty stuff should be done at planning commission. And, and, and it's going well. We don't agree with a lot of the things that are, that are coming out. We agree with many of them. There's a lot that have to be still worked on. But we don't think that this should be a council, you know, debate. Get- Get most of it done and deal with the one or two big items up here at the council. But the problem I see primarily is, is one that I, I learned about years ago when I was doing contracting work for, in summers. It's, it's when you go from like a, a subcontractor, you're doing some construction work, whether it's some man or whatever it is, and you try to change in midstream, you never get another guy to come in behind that subcontractor without, you know, making, you know, terrible problems of the, of the situation. You, you're not going to get a smooth transition going from Goldfarb and Littman to the new firm, it's just not going to happen. And, and I don't believe that, based upon the mistakes I'm seeing coming out of their interpretations of law and their writing of law, I don't think that the wise idea is to keep them on. I think the wise idea is to maybe go through a little bit of delay and bring them on board and then save you guys the time up here. How much time do I have left?
Hasn't turned red yet.
Thank you.
Oh, there you go, you're out of time.
Dick Nichols, Corona del Mar. I have to apologize, I didn't know this was on the agenda. I would like to ask the, the staff if they can upgrade the agenda portion to show the supplemental items. I was using that rather than the, the view, and basically, it doesn't show it.
It came out on Friday on the supplemental agenda.
It isn't on the agenda at all. This agenda as published today, and I've been gone for a week, doesn't show a supplemental item number 22 at all.
There you go.
I mean, that's fine. My suggestion is, my suggestion is, is that Denise Oberman and the Citizens Group have put together a, a legal team, and, and basically, their suggestions have obviously been very useful. And it seems to me that maybe you need a citizen help, and why not put one of them, let Denise pick somebody, or let herself be on, and at least choose somebody in tune with the citizenry, instead of as arbitrary people up there, you know, acting like kings. You know, I mean, work with the citizens a little bit. Thank you.
I'm sorry I left my crown at home. Is there anybody else I'd like to speak in public comments? Five minutes, Denise.
We're back to.
Two's even better.
I don't know that I'm going to accept that, that proposal, Dick, but thank you for the thought. I wanted to ask a couple of questions, just to get clarity on this. What I believe I heard is that this newly appointed counsel, I'm not going to call it a special counsel, is going to become the counsel for reporting to the city council, the legal counsel, on this subject.
Correct.
So, reporting to the council, it will be advising the council and will be the ultimate authority from a legal perspective, subject to the political will of the council?
Well, it's the authority that the council will be relying on for their advice, yes.
Right, 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 okay, so the reliance will be on that law firm. Okay, I just want to get the clarification, okay. Secondly, with regard to the planning commission, the planning commission does have a lot of information, so we would urge that they continue, that they be advised of this change and that they continue. And we'd like to make a specific request that they, that they review in detail the information that's been provided in the ordinance redline, that the planning commission and the new council be provided that information. We've spent over $100,000 on it, and the planning commission has embraced some of the ideas. So, we want to have some assurance that that information is going to be actively reviewed and considered.
It's, I believe it's all part of the administrative record that's been established, and I know the planning commissioners have seen it, if they, you know, they, it's their choice to review or not review, whatever they, they want to, and I'm sure it'll be provided to the new legal counsel as well.
Okay, and also, we would like to request that the ad hoc committee do provide direction to this new law firm, because we have some, we think it's, it's a fantastic idea, and we appreciate having a, a counsel focused on this issue. Somebody needs to provide them with direction.
Well, they'll receive, ultimately receive their direction from the entire council.
Okay, and the benefits of doing that versus a, an ad hoc committee?
There's seven of us, we all have an equal say.
All right, okay, and who will be responsible?
Excuse me, Denise, I think it's good that the entire council express their will regarding this to the new-
Okay, I think, I, I concur, I think that makes sense. Last question, who is going to be responsible for attending to the moratorium? Since now we're 100% assured that we're not going to get any ordinances before the expiration of the current moratorium.
Um, I don't know.
If we, we don't believe, we don't have, we can do the report, we may be able to have the new counsel handle that as well, if the council wants them to.
When's the, the deadline on that?
I think we have to extend the moratorium by the second meeting in October, and the report would have to be done. We, we would probably handle the report that's supposed to be done beforehand, and that would be done in the first meeting in October. I believe that's the time period. So, I think the new counsel could take that on.
Well, certainly that, depending on-
If, if not, we'd have to do it if, if that, if, you know, I don't want to let that deadline pass, so we would, we would do that.
Right, I guess it's a function of how quickly we can identify new counsel, and how quickly they can get up to speed on the issue.
Okay, is what we're asking for is that we not be hung out to dry with the current framework of the moratorium? So, we're asking for assurance from the city council that we will not be left with the moratorium with loopholes, regardless of who handles this.
Well, I, I don't guarantee what the new moratorium, should we choose to extend the moratorium, will look like, but certainly, if we have new legal counsel at that time, I imagine that they'll have whatever input they feel is necessary into the language of the new moratorium, or the extension of the moratorium.
Okay, well, we'd like to request that the council make a decision as to whether to extend the moratorium or not at the next council meeting, respectfully.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else has a comment? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close public comments. All right, we have a recommendation, I think we had a motion in a second, although now we've slightly changed it to say that the ad hoc committee will, term will expire upon appointment of new legal counsel or by the city council, and so-
One, one comment-
Yes, go ahead.
That came up during the last discussion. I realize this council is going to be the advisor on this particular issue, but I still reserve the right to work with Robin also, and making sure that I understand what the new counsel has to say.
Well, certainly, Robin's not going anywhere, and if you choose to speak to her on the matter, I don't know that anybody's going to stop you from doing that.
Yeah, I will continue to be available for the new counsel for any additional information or requests, or anything that they need from us.
Okay, anybody else from council have any further comment? Okay, please vote.
Motion, Currys.
Madam Clerk, motions for reconsideration.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Anybody making a motion for reconsideration? Okay, seeing none. Before we adjourn, Councilman Webb would like to adjourn the meeting in the memory of-
Roy Woolsey.
Roy Woolsey, go ahead.
Roy Woolsey, it was, I guess, first bought a house on Lido Isle in 1952. I didn't meet him until 1970, and I'd, I'd like to close this meeting in recognition of Roy, who passed away on August 28th, three days after sailing in a Lido 14 regatta. And that's, that's kind of unique in that he was 90 years old.
Whoa.
And this was a, a Lido 14 championship regatta. He didn't make the gold flight, but he was, won the last race in the silver flight, which is, is quite significant. He was sailing with the same partner or same crew member that he sailed with in 1958 for the first Lido 14 international regatta. Roy was a, a very congenial individual in that you walked into a room, and he always had a smile on his face, and he would come up and greet you, and I have had many, many wonderful experiences and stories, I won't go into some of those. He was a Lido Isle Yacht Club staff commodore, member of the Sunrise Rotary, he was an active supporter of the Boy Scouts of America. He was really recognized, I don't know, 14 or 15 years, as being the oldest sailor in the Flight of the Lasers, when that came about. I mean, this is a single boat that, I'm not as accomplished sailor as he was, but I'd never get on board it because I'd turn over. He was, he was very definitely optimistic and young at heart. He was a local attorney, and he had a, a sign in his office which really expressed his true feelings. The sign said, "I spent most of my life sailing and the rest was wasted." Our recognition of your loss goes to, goes out to his, his wife Louise, and son Roy Jr., daughter Barbara, and his two grandsons. Anyway, we'll miss you, Roy.
Very good, thank you for that, Councilman Webb, and with that, we are adjourned.